The still only have three.
Yes, because I cannot reach Mr. Berger. I don't know why he's not on.
No, but but the Mr. Berger would have made the four.
Correct.
Uh, am I missing something?
Yes. The four people that were able to do it tonight with Arthur Katz, Scott Meyer, Marty Cavell, and Richard Berger. I with the weather, we thought Scott might have to get called into work.
But then we would then we thought we'd still have four, not three.
Right, but I don't know where Mr. Berger is, Dan.
But, okay.
Without of Scott Meyer, we would have had three.
Right.
Not four.
I could go.
I'm doing the math. I believe in math.
I believe I s- I see.
You told you told me if Scott couldn't make it, we'd have four.
No, we'd have three. We'd have three. We had four from the beginning. We only had four members from the beginning for this evening. That was always the case.
Not my recollection.
Now we have three, Mr. Meyer, Damon Katz, and myself.
If Scott couldn't be here, then we wouldn't have a quorum and we couldn't do the meeting.
Okay, so uh if the applicants don't mind, let's let's get started. The applicants want to wait for a full board. Then uh you know, we'll give them a postponement.
All right, I have unmuted the first applications attorney, or I'm trying to unmute Kevin Conway. To see if he, how what he.
Hello Suzanne, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Hey, how you doing, buddy?
How are you?
Okay.
How's everyone doing on this rainy night?
Ain't dry right now.
I know. Well, hopefully the wind stays low. That that's the killer. Then then we lose the power.
And the meeting.
Right. Well, I worry more about the power. I'm in part of Pearl River where it's all trees and whenever we get too much wind, we lose power.
All right, um. Kevin, do you have a problem with having three members this evening? And then I will ask Mr. Chergan next.
Ordinarily, more is better than fewer. Um. Let me just see.
Why don't you um. Hold off on that, see how it goes. And if you feel. That um you would, you know, if there's going to be a vote.
Right.
Um. And you're concerned. Uh, then you could certainly request uh.
That's fine.
Uh, a uh continuance.
That's fine, we can do that.
Uh, Dan, if we have a continuance. Any new member will not have heard what's gonna be presented tonight.
Okay, this is something I don't want to be, well, actually, I like being a teacher, so. Um, there is no prohibition.
Exactly.
A board member reading the minute, not having attended the meeting. But reading the minutes, becoming familiar with what occurred. And ultimately participating in a future meeting. Do you agree with me on that, uh, Mr. Conway?
Yes, I do, from my former experience as a village attorney.
Yep.
And I, if I could interject, I just wanted to point out, I have three applications for October and three for November. I realize some might get pushed, but I'm just pointing it out.
Okay, well, for now, let's be positive.
I know. I just, for the record, everyone knows. Okay, Arthur, do you want to start with the agenda?
Uh, yeah, okay, uh. What if you let's uh open the meeting?
Okay.
And um Suzanne, can you read the agenda? Because I don't know where mine is.
Sure, uh, yes.
Before we get to the agenda. Um, let's take a uh, a uh. Roll call of who is which members are participating.
Right, that's what I was going to do based on the agenda. It's.
And the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, we're gonna do, um, Arthur called the meeting to order. We'll do the Fred's Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
Flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic. Which is one nation.
One nation, under God, indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
All right, for the roll call, Chairman Katz.
Here.
Uh, Member Meyer.
Here.
And Member Cavell.
I'm here.
Okay, uh, I'll just remember Burger Burger who's supposed to be here. Okay, there was no answer again at his house. I tried a second time.
Who's the fifth member?
The fifth member is um Sheldon Mayer. He indicated he couldn't be here. And the two ad hocks had said they couldn't be here. Because this is an additional ZBA meeting due to the number of applications.
No, I I just, for the record, I want uh it to be a clear record. Um, and part of that is. Um, that uh, the reason why we won't have. We couldn't have uh an additional member. And the two ad hocks is because we were notified previously that the three. Uh, in toto, uh, could not attend this uh additional. We'll call it all for now, uh, meeting of the ZBA.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, the first application, the public hearing on the application of eighty-four North Warner Road. Owner Yoel Leibowitz for a variance from Article Five, Section Two Ten. Table, uh, Section Two Ten dash fifteen, Table Two. R forty of Vermont zoning code for a total side setback required seventy feet, provided sixty feet. For a single-family residence to build in addition, including a new garage. And dining room on the first floor and a new master suite on the second floor. The property is located on the east side of North Warner Lane, approximately one thousand twenty feet north of Seth Lane. The lot is designated as Section Fifty-five dash sixteen, Block Two, Lot Two Point Five on the Town of Ramapo tax map. The property is located in the R forty zoning district and is comprised of one point three three acres. The street is addressed as eighty-four North Warner Lane, Suffolk, New York, one oh nine oh one.
Can I, all right, can I just step out of my uh. Really normal role. Um, um, and ask what. Uh. Including a new garage means, um.
Dan, before we get to that, are we supposed to approve of the minutes?
Uh, no, there I still have two pages to type. I didn't finish them. I I sent. Yes, it's it out because that was only two weeks ago. I'm almost done, but not quite there.
That's fine, so I I will leave that to the next meeting.
We didn't have enough people anyway, because Scott had to recuse himself from the last meeting, so it would have been only you and Marty anyway. So we wouldn't have had it all in favor. Um, somebody needs to, um, I just muted Dan. Okay, because that's who it was.
Okay, so uh so you read, uh, is anyone here uh in this Zoom meeting to speak on behalf of the applicant?
It's Kevin Conway. I'm trying to unmute him.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and and members, um.
And I'm gonna, I'm sorry, I'm gonna unmute Mr. Salentana.
Oh, sure. It's a pleasure always to be in Village of Armont. I see we're back virtual again. I was actually planning on going in person and. Back we are virtual again. Uh, but notwithstanding, it will be, uh, you know, I look forward to meeting everyone in person one of these days. Um, this, as Ms. Carly had indicated to everybody, this application is by the existing owner. The um, for permission to build in addition to the existing single-family home as it sits on the site currently. The addition will include a new garage as opposed to the existing. Um, located in the same location that the old garage was. A dining room uh would be incorporated on the first floor. Along with a new master suite, which be incorporated on the second floor as part of the addition. The lot itself is quite large and can easily accommodate the proposed addition. As the existing lot size, it comes in at fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirteen thousand square feet. Uh, with the requirements for a single-family home in the zone of forty thousand square feet. So it has an additional roughly ten thousand square feet. Actually, more than that, almost twenty thousand, larger than uh what is otherwise required. The uh acreage on the site is one point three three. Um, because the proposed placement of the garage in addition at the location, which with the natural position would be. And that's where it's being proposed, at the end of the driveway, is really the um only. Um. Place that one would expect to cite the garage itself and the addition. But the um, as a result, the only variance we need is maximum total side setback of seventy feet. Which is um required and we only have sixty. However, and this is a rare application where I normally have to um present where we have multiple or numerous. Uh, bulk table variance requirements from virtually every category. In this instance, we only have one. Um, and I just wanted to sh- uh just reiterate just quickly, the minimum lot area, we don't require. The lot width, we don't require. The front side back, we're at a hundred and nine feet. The front yard, we're at a hundred and nine feet. The side setback, we're twenty-five feet. The side yard, we're at ten feet. The rear setback, we're ten feet. The street frontage, we're at one ninety-seven. We're within the maximum height and the development coverage, which is usually the. The biggest uh no-no for an application or biggest difficulty. We are um well within and don't require uh variants for that as well. So even though it's a um, the actual square footage for the proposed addition is three thousand six hundred and seventy square feet. Totalling uh eight thousand seventy, seven hundred fifty-five square feet with the addition to the home. Because the lot is so large and the way it's situated, uh, we believe that um. The board hopefully will not have any pause or concern. Because the additional thing as to where it's located should be noted. The um, where the site is located is fairly remote and there's a um. An easement uh next to the property, a conservatory easement, uh, so there's no immediate neighbor. Uh, citing where the garage would and the addition would go. And there's also on the opposite side, there's an emergency access road also. Uh, so this is a. Parcel that's quite quite remote and removed. Um, and as such. You know, we respectfully don't believe it would be a negative impact to the neighborhood. That it would increase the property values by having the increase of the benefit to the owner, but it would also benefit this the surrounding neighbors. And I don't believe it would create any negative precedent either in the immediate neighborhood or for this board to be concerned with. Um, as to a negative precedent just across the board with regard to other applications of this type. Um, I believe it's Mr. Santano on tonight. You said Suzanne?
Yes, he's on. He's right next to you.
Yeah, okay, so um, so that being said, I do want the board's feedback because it's important. Um, positive or negative, uh, or just the board's, you know, initial reaction to this, because this is the first time we're presenting.
Conway, when you say uh new garage, are you uh destroying the old garage or is it gonna be two garages now?
No, I believe it's just one garage. Uh, Mr. Santano, um, I don't have the.
Replace the garage.
Yeah, that's what I believe, yeah. Unless Mr. Santano correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay, um, I like to add a couple of things, uh, uh, so right now it's a side entry garage. Uh, they're adding an addition from that side entry garage, putting another garage, it'll be a front entry garage. Uh, this lot has a lot of encumbrances. Uh, there's a orange and rock and easement all the way in the front. Through the whole property and in the rear, there's a sewer and conservation easement, so the house can only be placed in in this one location. Um, also, um, we're only requiring a total side setback, all the setback variances that like the side setback variances. Follow the code. It's just the total. When you add the two up, we don't meet that uh seventy feet. In addition, I'd just like to reiterate what Kevin said. Uh, due to the big easement in front and this house is positioned uh way in the back. The neighboring houses are are way in the front, so the hundreds and hundreds of feet away from each other. Uh, we have a Rampo uh land in the back and, you know, uh, as it's it's an isolated. Uh, house that w- won't affect anybody visually. And that's.
Anthony, Anthony, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
You got this hundred and fifty-five foot wide uh orange and rock and utility easement.
Right.
Um, are you familiar with the High Voltage Proximity Act?
Well, if you look at the plan, you you we show where the uh poles and the overhead wires are. Uh, with.
No, no, I I, the specific question is, are you familiar with the High Voltage Proximity Act?
No.
Okay. High Voltage Proximity Act prevents any uh construction. Um, of a structure. Uh, within. The Orange and Rockland Utility Easement.
Oh, I see it. Right, we're not in easement.
Okay, that's what I, and I'm not, I'm not saying you are, I just, um.
Yeah, the proposed additions are not.
I want to make sure. Because it says proposed addition. And uh, I have to admit, uh, having trouble locating. Um, the easements with um. With regard to the proposed addition, whether uh there is any structure. Involved in um, um, the construction within that proposed addition. Um, which could violate the High Voltage Proximity Act.
No, it's not.
Like, I could highlight and show.
I mean.
Like the stair, give me an example, the stairs. That it looks like stairs, extended deck. Is any part of the deck within that hundred and fifty foot easement?
No, no structure is within the hundred and fifty foot easement.
Okay.
And we could put a note on the drawing such too.
Uh. I mean, let me tell you, um. You could put a note, but um. Uh. That would really be between you and Orange and Rockland Utilities.
But we're not in the easement, so.
Yep, and as long as that's the case.
Yes, that's the case.
There won't be an issue. I I I'm I'm merely um throwing it out there as uh. Uh. Uh, a uh helpful point. Um, because. When I first started practicing law, um, there was this uh restaurant called the um. Rib Cage in um Spring Valley. And they uh. Knocked down their build, they got the municipal approvals, knocked down their building, built a. I think it's two-story restaurant where there used to be a one-story restaurant. Um, and uh, there was a lawsuit that uh came about and. Uh, what happened is that they built part of their building, a large part of the building. Uh, within the Orange and Rockland easement. Orange and Rockland argued full uh violation of the High Voltage Proximity Act and. The Rib Cage uh has not existed since then, and that goes back. At least twenty-five years. So I certainly don't think anyone wants that to happen to your client.
Absolutely, thank you, Dan.
Okay.
Arthur.
Yes.
That's I have a couple of questions at this point.
Please kill free Dan.
All right, um. All right, so this couple of questions, maybe not related to each other, maybe they are. Uh, so this addition brings the square footage up to eighty-seven hundred and fifty-five square feet. I'm just curious, point of information, you know, I looked at um. You know, the houses as they exist on North Warner Lane, what what are the approximate square footages of those? Are they in and around five thousand square feet, uh, Mr. Conway? Um, and also. The building inspector, Mr. Zumo's uh letter of August third talks about adding a garage. And a kitchen as opposed to um, the information I have is a dining room. Uh, master suite, et cetera. This is, and also the height, Mr. Zumo talks about um. The elevations do not indicate a total height uh based on measurements that he took from the drawings. And he says it appears to be closer to thirty-eight feet, which is beyond the zoning requirement. Of uh, I believe thirty-five feet, so I need you to clear that up and. Uh, Mr. Zumo, uh, you talk about a kitchen and the applicant's not talking about a kitchen.
So I'm trying to un, oops.
I got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep. The uh drawings are. The drawings submitted are hand drawn and they are. For the first time I've ever seen this in a long time, they're not drawn to scale.
Okay.
So there was issues with questions on some of the way some of this was drawn and we couldn't disretain, dis- disretain the height. Based on the drawings that were submitted.
Ascertain. Ascertain.
Thank you. I I made an ass, but do I diss it? I got it.
No, I'm sorry, my, I my mother used to do that to me all the time. I apologize.
So. The uh.
Very good. Very true.
Um. I asked for clarification and I actually had a discussion with the person who drew them. And by taking additional measurements, we were able to to verify that the height is less than thirty-five feet. So the height confirmed, yes. So that, we should have, I should have reissued another letter, but I didn't.
All right, that helps, uh, that helps big, bigly, um.
A- as far as the um, Mr. Cavell is is uh, as far as the surrounding neighborhood, I did not do an analysis. To determine if there's any other, uh, the average height, or I'm sorry, the average uh size of the surrounding homes. Uh, so I did not have that um ascertain for tonight.
Well, looking at a, you know, I just pulled up uh Google Earth of Long Warner Lane, they. They ordered, you know, they all appear to be similar in size to the existing structure, you know. Four to five thousand square feet, thirty-five hundred.
That would be my guess. That would be my guess.
I mean, I know what, you know, basically what they look like, so uh. The only change is the side addition and uh, okay, uh.
Um, the the reason I put in the kitchen is because the existing garage is going to be converted into the new kitchen. And the drawings that I received actually showed two kitchens. Uh, it says an existing kitchen and an additional kitchen. So it's, I mean, I'm sure that'll be clarified before they start work.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm making, I'm making notes now to, so that'll be.
Yeah, Kev, if you could put that in a revised narrative.
Exactly.
Please.
Yes.
I'm just, uh, I I don't know if I'm out of turn or it's inappropriate for me to ask the question. I'm just curious on the family size here. To go to.
We're all out of turn.
What?
We've all been out of turn.
Okay, well, if I am out of turn, I apologize, but I still.
No, more me more than anyone.
We still love you.
Thanks.
Only as. We've been around a long time, thick and thin, love and hate, hate and love, it's all the same. All right, um. I mean, is this a large family? I mean, you know, to go to clearly nine thousand feet, again, I know it's not within the application, but I. You know, I I have this uh curiosity. It could be, you don't have to answer it. I I'm just throwing.
Yeah, no, I I don't know the answer is uh I'm here now. But I can, you know, it's again, that's something we can find out that's not an issue.
All right, um, all right, I'm gonna reserve a couple of questions. If any of the other members have any questions, Arthur, uh, Scott.
Now, Maury, you covered. I'm most concerned about the um. The press not being drawn to scale as well. I was looking at that. I saw that and I was also concerned about the height. And uh, we just took care of that, so so far so good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And and I would note too that the the existing garage uh was gonna become the dining room. So I believe that was, because there was a question as to that. So there is an existing dining room, but that will become the uh. The old garage will become the new dining room.
Oh, the plans actually say it's gonna become the kitchen.
Yeah, and I, but I think that's what they, it's not clear, but we'll make that, we'll clarify that.
Why does the application refer to Rachel Burris?
I don't know, because it's Anthony's. It's not Rachel.
Well, that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, I don't know. I didn't submit the narrative and I didn't submit the app, so I'm not sure.
I'm not blaming you, I'm just.
No, no, I know, I'm just saying, yeah, I that's a good question, I don't know.
It's been blaming a lot of people tonight.
So the application needs to be updated as well?
Yep. I would like to meet Dan's mother at some point.
Oh, don't, don't do it.
I've known Dan a long time and I think it would clarify a lot for me.
It may explain a lot, yes.
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 I'm sure she's very nice.
Uh, ver- very, very nice. But. Um, have you ever uh gotten an A on an English test in high school? And put it on your refrigerator and woke up the next morning, noticed it was gone. And then gone to English class the next day and was told by the English teacher to meet with her after class. Um, and been told that um. I've uh been handed by your mother, uh, your English paper and um. Based on her comments, I've regraded it and here's your new grade, C plus.
Oh, my God. Your mother threw you under the bus?
You you still want to meet my mother?
It under the bus, my God. I feel for you, Dan. Feel for you.
Thanks.
That's tough.
Let's see. All right, where are we here? Let's uh, let's move it along. So the twenty-third doesn't become the twenty-fourth.
Does anybody else have questions on the board? Arthur, do you have any?
Uh, no, I'm ready to open it up to the public.
Well, we have some letters to be read into the record. I don't know if you want to do that first.
And just I, and I do have the, I have the information, the family, it's uh three kids, two adults. Um, so, but they wanted to increase the, put the addition on.
Okay.
And I believe the owner, the owner's on and wanted to speak as well.
Uh, can you tell me? I don't know who he is.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I'm trying to pull him out of mind to see who.
I I don't see the name that's on the application. That's why I'm a little.
Yeah, I'm looking.
Thank you. I'd be happy to unmute him.
Yeah.
Is that Ezra L. who's raising their hand? I think that might be it.
Okay. Yeah, that's it. That's Ezra, yep, go ahead.
Hi. Who's speaking now? I'm sorry, who's speaking now? Ezra L.? Who is Ezra?
I'm Rachel, I'm the wife, just using the home computer.
Can you speak a little louder, please?
Hi, I'm Rachel, I'm the wife. Uh, I'm just using the home computer, so it says Ezra.
Okay.
And what exactly, how how are you connected to this case?
She's the wife.
Wife, this is uh, uh.
Yes.
I'm sorry to disappoint you.
Okay, uh, are you going to testify now? Is that what's happening?
Um, I'm not sure what you mean by testify, but I can clarify any information that I have any questions with.
You are. Make that you're about to give uh true to the best of your knowledge.
Sorry?
This information you're about to tell us true to the best of your knowledge, you affirm that the information that you're about to give us is true to the best of your knowledge.
Yes.
Yes, okay, they proceed. One second, your address is the same as the applicant, because you're the wife, right?
Correct.
Okay, proceed, please. You can go, you can talk.
Um, yeah, as, as the Kevin has said, the, the lot is positioned in a very like tricky place where only way we can extend is um, towards the garage. Um, for clarification, the old garage will become the new kitchen and include the old kitchen. So it's just like making the kitchen a little longer. Um, you know, we commonly have kids, but we come from very large families. I personally come from 16 and my husband comes from 15, so um, you know, I, so I feel like I need to prepare my house for a bigger kitchen, more kids. Um, and that includes, you know, the bedrooms. Right now it's only three bedrooms upstairs, so with addition on top, it will give us a little bit more uh, space. Um, yeah, so that's basically um, what, you know, we're looking to do. The current dining room is very small, so we're gonna, you know, we're thinking the dining room behind the new garage would give us a little bit more room.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there anything else you want to add or is that complete your, that was your statement?
I can't hear you, Arthur.
Arthur, you need to get closer to your microphone.
It's very hard to hear you.
All right, is that better now?
Much better.
Totally.
Uh, so is this complete your statement? Uh, this uh, Libowitz, so what is your hearing?
Rachel.
Rachel.
Libowitz.
Right, so Mrs. Libowitz, does that complete your statement?
Was I?
Is that complete? Have you finished saying what you want to say?
Yeah, that's it for, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, is there anyone else who uh, is there anyone else you want to uh, put forward?
Do you want me to read the record, the letters into the record and then you can open the public hearing?
Uh, yeah, first, well, first, Kevin finishes case. Uh, Kevin, is there anything more you want to add?
Yeah, no, we're, we're fine. Um, that's fine.
All right, then Suzanne, could you please uh, read in those uh?
Right. For the record, there's no G M L uh, required. I did print out the report in everyone's file so that they could see that for the record. Um, from Rockland County um, Center for Environmental Health dated August 23rd. Um, dear Ms. Carley, we received an application and plans prepared by Anthony Salantano, revised through August 4th for, for the above referenced project. Comments are filed as follows. Application is to be made to the R C D O H for review of stormwater management system compliance with the county mosquito code. Please uh, contact us with any further questions. Liz Mello, Senior Public Health Engineer. That's the standard letter. Uh, the other letter dated September 8th is from the town of Ramapo, Department of Public Works. Um, our, our office is in receipt and received plans prepared by Anthony Salantano for the above project, uh, last revised August 4th. We thank you for the opportunity to comment on the plan. Our comments are as follows. A sanitary sewer review is required prior to final plot plan approval. The fee of $125 payable to the town of Ramapo at the town of Ramapo planning department is due from the applicant. Ordinarily, the town would not begin the review process until this department has received receipt of the above fee and it has been paid. Please make sure the applicant submits the review as soon as possible. The lowest floor to be sewed must be indicated and the interior check valve is required. Please keep us informed of any developments on this project. Should you have any questions or comments, please feel free to contact me, Paul Gudansky, engineer two. And the last comment letter is from Rockland County Sewer District Number One. Our uh, dated August 26, 2021, our office has received and reviewed a plot plan that was last revised on August 4th, which Anthony Salantano prepared for the above project. We thank you for the opportunity to comment. Our comments are as follows. Approval of this application and the variances for proposed addition to a one-family residence on a 58,189 square foot lot in the R40 district does not require the applicant to pay an impact fee in accordance with the Rockland County Sewer Use Law, last amended in 2010. However, if the use or the occupancy of the property exceeds one unit, for example, with an apartment, a house of worship, a school, a daycare center, or a home occupation, the district will require further review and the owner will have to pay an impact fee. Number two, details for sanitary sewer construction, if any, must comply with the district's construction standards and should be shown on the plans. Please, um, number three, details for the sanitary, sanitary sewer connection, excuse me, if any, are subject to the approval by the town of Ramapo. Please inform us of all the developments in this project. If you have any questions, please contact this office. Very truly yours, Joseph LaFerranda, engineer two. Um, for the record, I did send it to the town of Ramapo. I did not receive any comments.
Thank you Suzanne. Uh, can I assume that all the surrounding neighbors have gotten notice of this?
Yes, this was noticed. For zoning, we do adjacent and abutting properties.
Okay.
It has been noticed.
Nobody, and nobody from the adjacent uh, people have uh, complained about the size of this house. Is that correct? The proposed house?
I have.
Well, we don't know yet.
We have to open the public hearing, but I, I can tell you I have not received any uh, emails or any statements at all right now.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, so uh, then let's uh, have, do anyone want to make a motion to open this up to the public?
I'll make the motion that we open up this application for uh, public hearing.
I'll second.
Seconded, okay. All right, does anyone uh, want to say anything, Suzanne?
If you want to speak, please raise your hand. I'm going to unmute Melanie's iPad.
Uh, good evening. I have a few questions. It seems like they're asking for awful lot without have, unless I'm not clear about this. It does like the um, blueprint has really been uh, clear.
One second, Melanie, could you state your full name and address for the record?
I'm sorry, Melanie Phillips, 217 Cherry Lane, Tallman.
Right, and do you affirm that the information you're about to give us is true to the best of your knowledge?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Do you affirm that the information you're about to tell us is true to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you. Will you proceed, please?
Sure. Um, I just, I'm curious if there was blueprints submitted because it seems that there's an awful lot of questions about kitchens going, where the dining room's going to be, where this room's going to be, where that room's going to be. I don't understand how you can approve if you don't know exactly what you're approving. Um, that's.
Size setbacks. So this is a, uh, the question here is about a variance for size setbacks, not about a kitchen.
Oh, excuse me. So no, nothing like um, it, and, and I appreciate that of big families. But does this address also use of, of the, the room facilities and, and can a normal residential thing um, home um, is it able to substantiate that, let's see, 16 people on one side, 15 on the other? And I'm assuming that siblings are married and children. So a lot of people in house use bathroom. And if every Friday night, that's a lot of people um, using bathroom, you know, I, I, I'm just having questions came up discussing this, that's all.
What, what exactly is the question?
Is the sewer, is the system able to um, you uh, substantiate, is it able to can have all these people using the bathroom facilities? For, I don't know if it's every week. I'm not sure how often they would have so many families there. These things I'm curious about.
Arthur, I, if I may, I think the applicant was just telling us the size families that they emanated from and that they would be having company. I believe from time to time. And who's to say how many people come to, you know, just to answer the member of the uh, public's question, um, who's to say how many people can attend somebody's house at any given time? You know, am I right, Arthur? Um?
Yeah, I think you're right. I mean, uh, we all usually do basis surveys uh, or basis usage surveys, uh, when it's really not an issue here. The issue has to do with a side set, total side setback. Uh, and that with gas and capacity.
So will, will there be another hearing? Will there be another hearing as the size of this? Because I understood that there was a problem already on Lorna Lane with these overflowing.
You got cut off. Could you repeat that?
Couldn't hear you at the end.
I think she was asking, um, will there be an additional hearing? And I, I think the answer would be if this is voted on, if this is voted on tonight, you know, no, at this juncture, but uh, if it got, it would have to go to the planning board anyhow for their uh, expert uh, you know, uh, oversight of the project. Isn't that right, Arthur or Dan?
Yeah, yeah, Dan, does this have to go to the uh, to the planning board? Has it gone to the?
No.
No, no, this is not impending at all. This is, this is a family residence.
I stand corrected. I, I take that back. So it would just be, no, there wouldn't be a future hearing if it's concluded tonight. I think that's the simple answer.
And just listening right there, I mean, I'm sure we've all hosted family functions. I'm sure that we've all hosted graduation parties at our houses. Uh, we've all done the same thing.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Does that conclude your comments, Miss uh, Melanie?
Um, yeah, it doesn't give me any answers really. I just, I, I can't understand how you don't have like a real blueprint. And I understand that the, the meeting tonight is about a setback, a variance on how, how far it, it can be put on the property. But I just don't quite understand if you don't have a blueprint.
Melanie, Scott here. Um, once we vote on the, on the variance, it goes back to the building department and it will reflect on some where there'll be a side note saying that before the building department issue the permit, you will have the proper drawings to scale before that permit is issued.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
The, the, the blueprints that we received were hand drawn, very not, not, not good quality. That'll all be confirmed before it goes anywhere and he gets issued a building permit.
All right, but uh, Mr. Mr. Zumo, there wouldn't be any issues here due to the size of the, of the uh, property being
No.
Close to an acre and a half with respect to floor area ratio or anything like that.
No, the box isn't changing. The outside of the building is not, once you, once you okay the addition, the outside isn't changing. The, what rooms they configure inside is the only question. So that's not going to change anything outside the, the configuration of the house.
Well, then why do they need a setback if, if the outside configuration?
Addition on to, to bump, they're putting an addition on. What the rooms are divided into doesn't really matter at this point. It's the addition that's the important part of this, this meeting.
Well, there is an addition. Uh, let's be clear, a building is going to be attached.
Garage.
To the building. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else? Uh, Dan, anyone else who wants to speak?
Danielle um, Meehan would like to speak. I just unmuted you.
Hi there. Um, I just want to add something to what Melanie.
One second, Miss Meehan.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I forgot. Uh, Danielle Meehan, 18 Ackerman Avenue in Aramont.
Okay, do you affirm the information you're about to give us is true to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, sir, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to add um, something to what Melanie was talking about. The sewers, which I realize has nothing to do with um, what this meeting is about for this um, house. But for those of us who pay attention, not everybody does, and that's okay. Um, the Lorna Lane area's had a lot of sewer spills and it all ends up in the Ramapo River, which is part of our drinking aquifer, which is a concern. So um, it's also, um, if I'm thinking of where this house is, it's also close to wetlands. So that's all. And again, the bigger the house, the bigger the possibility of people there that could be using the facilities, obviously. So I um, I can't speak for Melanie, but I, I suspect that's her and I've had some conversations about this, so that's all.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else, Suzanne?
No, I don't have anyone that's raised their hand. That, that's it.
No one else? Okay, uh, shall we close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second body.
To close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Uh, do uh, Dan, do we need to uh, classify this as a type two CEQA?
This is uh,
Unlisted.
The prototypical type two action under CEQA.
Oh, and therefore needs no.
Requiring no further review.
Okay, so um, that's that.
You don't have to, you don't have to declare anything.
It is. So I won't. Very good. Um.
So what type is it, Dan? Type two?
Type two.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I guess you need a motion on that, huh?
A motion on?
Well, I mean, overkill, but
To put it into the record.
Overkill rather than underkill.
Well, how's about to put it into the record that uh, make a motion under the State Environmental Quality Review Act that this application be declared a type two, no further action required or necessary.
Okay, is that to that? I seconded. Okay. Um, and do we need a vote on that or is it unanimous?
No, it's unanimous.
Unanimous, okay.
No, have a vote. If you made a motion, you have a second, you have a vote.
Okay, Suzanne, can you call the roll?
Sure, Mr. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Meyer.
Aye.
Chairman Katz.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries three to zero, all in favor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do we need a motion to now, please, to close the public hearing?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
You just did that.
I believe I just did.
Yes, close the public hearing before we did CEQA.
Oh, okay, very good. Glad we're paying attention.
Okay, uh, um, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Couple of things um, that I want to make sure don't get lost in um, the discussion. Um, we need an updated narrative um, to reflect the use of the uh, replacement garage. We need an updated um, um, application, really just pages or page to reflect that uh, Anthony Salantano is the engineer, not Rachel Burris. And uh, ultimately uh, not necessarily before chairman's endorsement, but certainly before um, an application for a building permit. Um, scaled, accurate, uh, not, actually uh, um, well, scaled, accurate drawings. Uh, so that the building inspector uh, has something that can be relied on um, to uh, review um, the building permit application. Have I forgotten anything? Help me if I have.
Now, can we uh, make a motion and make a contingent on the submission of all what you mentioned? Or do we have to uh, put it off to the next meeting, which is already, you know?
No, you, I, I have no objection um, to you making it contingent. I see uh, I, I leave it to the board to determine if there are other things um, that I didn't mention uh, or haven't thought of as to why there would need to be an additional meeting. But uh, with the items that I mentioned, um, I don't see a prohibition from the board making it conditions and allowing it to go to a vote tonight.
Okay, uh, and uh, we discussed wetlands. There's no problem with the wetlands here, right? That's what the Mr. Salantano told us. That we're like 100 feet away from something from the wetlands.
Yes.
Yes, uh, and also we're far away enough from the easement of origin Rockland, but that's not an issue here either. Is that correct?
Correct. That'll be their problem if it is.
Whose problem?
The applicant.
Applicant, okay.
Dan, what's that law called again?
High.
High voltage.
Proximity Act.
That's some high voltage.
You learn something new every day, my friend.
Good. All right, then uh, one second.
So do I.
Right, uh, you had an option of whether we should go forward or you want to go to the next meeting uh, uh, where we have a larger uh, turnout on the board. where we have a larger turnout on the board.
That's up to Mr. Conway.
Right, Mr. Conway?
Yes, no, I would, I would, on behalf of the client, wish to proceed tonight. And I would note expressly that those three conditions are part of the, would be part of the approval if the approval were granted.
Okay, those conditions, which Mr. Crash Howard has listed.
The, the updated narrative, the, the updated page listing Mr. Salantano as the engineer, as, as well as the scaled, accurate drawings for the addition before the building permit would issue in order that Mr. Zumo can properly review the application.
Okay, then, does anyone here want to make a motion, please? Anyone on the board want to make a motion concerning this application?
Tick tock, tick tock, tick tock, all right, Mr. Dan? Well, we can also entertain ourselves during these trying times. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve this application.
Okay, so two, let's be a little more specific.
What are you approving?
I was taking a deep breath and thank you, thank you, Mr. Attorney. I know, seriously, thank you for prompting me there. The conditions that were listed by learned attorney a few minutes ago, Suzanne?
Yeah, updated narrative, updated application and scaled, accurate drawings provided to the building department before a building permit is issued.
All right, that's good, that's great, but I was actually referring to the variance being applied for. Well, I'm, I'm getting to that. Okay, just to me, just to be clear. Okay, I have it right, my hand here, right here. All right. All right, motion to approve the application of 84 North Lorna Lane, property owner Yoel Liebowitz for a variance from Article Five, Section 210-15, Table Two, R40 of Airmont zoning code for total side setback. Required setback is 70 feet. Provided is 60 feet for a single family residence to build an addition, including a new garage and dining room on the first floor and a new master suite on the second floor. I don't know if you need the rest of it, but the property's located.
From the required 70 feet to
I was going to get to that. You're good, you're so far ahead of me, man.
I, that's mom.
Look at this, we sent
That's mom. That's Mrs. Crash Howard.
Yeah, he's jumped, it's your mom, all right. In other words, the request for the variance is of 10 feet on, for the total side yard. That is it in essence, so that is my motion, and we already have the lot designated within the public hearing, do I need to re-designate the lot? Suzanne or Dan? For the motion? Okay, we have that information.
Okay. I think you could do it based on the plans prepared by Anthony Salantano last dated
August 4th.
August 4th.
Okay, Scott, you want to second all that?
I'll second that.
Okay, Suzanne, can you call the roll?
Sure. Member Cavell?
Well, I'm gonna vote yes, but I, I just want to make a comment. You know, with the, with respect to the size of the addition, you know, the surrounding homes are of similar style, colonial, two stories. This home happens to be on an oversized lot for the area, one point, an acre and a third, so even though I'm not thrilled with the additional size, it is on a larger piece of property. With respect to, I just want to make a comment with respect to what activities citizens conduct in their homes and how many people, you know, not unless there's 800 people in a home and it would be a fire hazard, is certainly private information on, you know, for the private property owner to live life as they please. So, you know, it's just something about liberty. And as a zoning board member, you know, can judge variances in, you know, many different perspectives, but to get into the private existence of our fellow citizens is not where I would like to venture. So I will vote yes, given that the extent of the variance is, in my opinion, not, you know, a great request in and of itself, so I vote yes.
Thank you. Next.
Okay, member Meyer?
Good evening, everybody, I've listened to all the citizens as well as the homeowner. Pretty much what we're talking about here is just 10 feet up from 70 to 60, which I have no problem with. As long as we make sure we take care of those three concerns that we have that are in the motion. And I vote yes, and I'm hoping one of these days, Kev, you go back, well, the house gets less than 8,000 square feet, you know what I mean? It is kind of large.
Okay. And Chairman Katz?
I also vote yes to approve. It is a large house, but it's a very large lot and nobody of the surrounding neighborhood who lives there has issued any complaints about this. So I vote yes. And I agree that with Mr. Cavell that because of another seller's house is none of our business and assuming that the fire codes are all satisfied and I'm sure Lou will, our building inspector will check, therefore I vote yes.
Okay, application approves three to zero unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Conway.
Yeah, thanks again, everyone, have a good night.
Thank you.
You too, Kev.
Take care, Dan.
You got it.
Arthur, do you want me to read the next one into the record?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's it, number two, yes.
Number, well, six on the agenda, but determination on the application of Meyer Kleinman, the owner of a one-family dwelling for an appeal on the determination of the building inspector to plan, to build a structure by means of a roof on poles or breezeway connecting the proposed accessory garage and gym to the main house. The property is located on the east side of Bassin Parkway, approximately 150, 1,050 feet south of Kenneth Street. The lot is designated as 56.14 Block 2, Lot 37 on the town of Ramapo tax map. The property is located in the R25 zoning district and is comprised of 0.65 acres. The street address is 39 Bassin Parkway, Armont, New York, 10952. And we have the applicant's attorney, Joseph Chergan, on.
Okay, Mr. Chergan, you want to
Yes, Anthony Salantano is also on this one as well, he's the engineer for the applicant, so. Good evening, my name is Joseph Chergan, I am the attorney for Meyer Kleinman, the owner of 39 Bassin Parkway. I and Anthony Salantano are, are here seeking an appeal from the building inspector's decision regarding whether or not a breezeway that is essentially 40 feet long and about five feet wide, connecting a single-family home to another structure that's going to serve as a gym, renders the, renders them one structure under the zoning code as opposed to a, a house and, and an accessory structure where it would be two, two different structures. Specifically, the building inspector issued a decision on July 22nd, 2021, and that's what we're appealing from, we did file, file our application within 30 days of the issuance of the building inspector's determination. And the specific section that we're talking about is in your code, Section 91-9. And I'll just read it for you, it's only one of the definitional sections we're talking about, not all of them. Just, accessory building is defined as a building subordinate to the main building on the lot and used for purposes customarily incidental to that of the main building. Where an accessory building is attached to the main building in a substantial manner as by a wall or roof, such accessory building shall be considered part of the main building. And that basically is exactly what we're, we're seeking to do here. We're seeking to create a breezeway roof that will connect these two buildings together. Your code does not have a definition of the word substantial in it that I could find. So I went to Black's Law Dictionary for the definition of the word substantial, because that's really what this is a debate over. It's that word as it applies to that definition. And substantial in Black's Law Dictionary is of real worth and importance, of considerable value, valuable, belonging to substance, actually existing, real, not seeming or imaginary, not illustrative, solid, true, and veritable. Yeah, I know that gives a lot of help, but that's, that's what the word means in, in legal terms. So what we wanted to do is look around and see what other communities are doing and how they're interpreting this kind of situation, because it's not unique. This isn't the first time that this is going to happen. It's happened, I don't know if it's happened in Armont, I haven't seen anything, there's something to go by in terms of precedent in Armont, there may be, but in, in other municipalities locally, we were able to find, Mr. Salantano actually was able to find several other, and it's roughly eight applications that are similar nature where the connection between the two buildings was actually smaller for the most part than the connection to these two buildings here. So what was being used to, as, as a bridge or a roof or whatever it was, was, was smaller. And what I did was I, I provided a letter to, to the village, it was yesterday. I don't know if it's part of your packet, I would hope it is that you have access to it, where we gave several different approved applications or, or applications where it's in the process of being approved, but the issue of the breezeway is, is resolved. We gave two from the town of Ramapo, two from the town of Stony Point, one from the town of Clarkstown, one from the town of Havestra, one from the village of Spring Valley and one from Wesley Hills, and actually just, just today, Mr. Salantano found a second one from the, from the village of Wesley Hills. It's three Martha Lane, same kind of thing. And Wesley Hills, I think, is, is very indicative because it's the exact same definitional section that is, that, that you, you are utilizing here, that it be a substantial connection between the two. So, look, I'm not an engineer, I'm an attorney, I, I understand that, that we follow precedent, if we can follow precedent for direction. Mr. Salantano is an engineer, he's, he's prepared these types of plans, he's studied this and I, I'd like him to tell you what he understands as to how these things are determined in other places that are local to here. And of course, any questions you might have, I'll ask or, or Mr. Salantano would, would answer. So just wanted to roll over to Anthony.
Sir, are you calling him as a witness?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so swear him in. Mr. Salantano?
Yes.
Hey, do you affirm that the information you're about to tell us is true to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, see. We, we, what is your address?
31 Rosben Road, Beals, New York, 10984.
Thank you, now proceed, yes.
Just, you know, I can only testify, you know, after 22 years of doing this, that municipalities, that's how they look about creating a breezeway to accessory structure to make it one structure. I can just give you a sample, it was just tonight, and I was, before this, I was in the village of, I'm in town of Havestra, a zoning meeting. Again, the, an applicant built illegally an accessory structure to, within five feet of the principal building, and they require in their code 15 feet between the, the accessory structure and the principal structure. And the chairman would not approve it, so the building inspector of town Havestra went to the state, spoke to Mrs. Krieger, and she recommended that we attach, you know, a small little breezeway between the two to make it one principal structure. And that's, you know, I can only give you samples of, you know, my experience, and that's all I could testify to.
Mrs. Salantano, can I ask you, could you explain for the record, just to make it clear, what is the advantage of having it considered one building as opposed to two structures?
You know, a lot of times it's because the separation between the, the, the buildings is too, too small, they needed another thing. Another thing too is certain accessory has different requirements than the principal building. And, you know, by providing a breezeway, it connects it. Another time is a lot of, a lot of, in like in Ramapo, for example, someone had two principal, two buildings on a lot, this is Spring Valley two, and they don't allow two this buildings on a lot, so they use that breezeway as a connection to make one building. Again, this is only from experiences.
Is that an issue here in Armont, that you can't have, the reason you want this is to be one, one build, one structure, so that shouldn't be two structures on the lot?
I think this requires
Be an accessory structure.
Right, the accessory structure, that, that doesn't meet certain requirements as accessory structure. And by, by connecting it, it meets it as a, a principal, a principal building.
And what are those requirements that it, does that need if it's a separate structure?
I believe the size of the, this accessory structure exceeds what's required by the code, therefore, by connecting it, it, it doesn't meet the accessory structure requirements and becomes a principal structure.
Okay, thank you. Have you completed what you have to say, Mrs. Salantano?
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay, Mr. Chergan, you want to continue?
I, I just want to, I just want to add real briefly, that there, the denial letter for Mr. Zumo, it did mention some other issues. I'm not, we're not here taking issue with those other issues, the, the only question, the, the only question that we're seeking an, an appeal of is the interpretation as to whether or not it's, it's one building or two because of the breezeway.
Okay. Arthur, if you, if I may, may I unmute the building inspector?
Yes, please do.
Okay, before, before the Zoom meeting, Lou had written a letter and did some research, I don't know if you all had a chance to see it, I emailed it to everyone and I'll let him talk about it, but for the record, he did some research based on the, yesterday afternoon submission from Mr. Chergan, and I'll let him talk.
Okay. Lou, are you there?
Yes, I am. I did, I, I did some research based on the drawings that I received from Mr. Chergan and Mr. Salantano and did some research on the codes in each of the villages that they submitted the drawings from. So I did write a letter, I don't know who has it or if anybody actually got it, because I was working on it late, because I said, like I said, I got the drawings yesterday. So basically, if, I mean, if you want, I could read you the letter if that would be easier.
Yes.
Do that, yeah, do that, please.
Okay, it says, "To the members of the ZBA, I have attached a comparison of the codes applicable to an accessory structure and if listed, the attachment to a primary structure. You will see only one code that allows attachment via breezeway built using poles and a roof. That is Spring Valley. The code for Armont and Wesley Hills are virtually identical and specify the attachment. The other codes state attachment is possible, but do not state the method or extent of the attachment. The only applicable code for this application in this case would be the code for the area in which the house is located. In this application, the initial application was for the addition of a gym to the rear of the garage, an accessory structure. The application was examined and had zoning issues. In addition to, it is in addition to an accessory structure, a detached In addition to, it is in addition to an accessory structure, a detached garage. Due to the status of it as an accessory structure, it has certain zoning limitations. Including the size of the proposed structure and the height. The size would require planning board approval. It is greater than one thousand square feet. The actual size is seventeen hundred square feet. In addition to the planning board, several variances would be required. Including a variance for height as the accessory structure is limited to twenty feet at the highest point. The structure is twenty-eight feet tall. A variance is also required for lot coverage and FAR. No measurements were provided, which could be verified. To alleviate some of these issues, the applicant's engineer suggested a breezeway be added to the principal house and the accessory structure. Attempting to cause the accessory to count as part of the principal structure. Drawings were submitted of a brief, long breezeway, four feet wide, crossing the driveway and connecting to the detached garage. The breezeway is constructed as a roof on poles like a cabana pavilion. After reviewing the plans and the code for the village of Airmont, a denial letter was written, which you have a copy of. It restates the code with miss, which Mr. Churgan read previously. The code is specific as to the method of attachment. It must be a connection of a, must be the connection of a roof or wall. For example, a detached garage sitting ten feet away from a primary structure. But the roof of the house extends over the garage, causing the breezeway to be formed between the two structures. Is, this is an acceptable connection and should be considered one structure. The word substantial, according to the definition provided by Black's Legal Dictionary states. Substantial being significant or large or having substance. In conclusion, I advise the board to look at the drawings supplied and the applications of the examples. One of the examples is in addition in a new garage, thirty-three, thirty-five wood. It is possible that the breezeway was created by the roof of the extension extending over and continuing onto the garage. Without architectural drawings, the construction is unknown. Most of the drawings do not explain the nature of the attachment. You will note modular classrooms attached to single floor buildings. Three building, three family dwellings attached to single family houses. Two single family homes bridged on one lot. And a primary home turned into a cabana and a bridge built to the new six thousand square foot home in the front yard. I assume that these examples have all been accepted by the various municipalities they are located in. I did not have time, based on the late submittal, to confirm the applications are correct. And any further details with the local building inspectors in these towns and villages. Based on the wording in the other codes, it is entirely possible that all these projects were reviewed and approved in the municipalities they are located in. Best regards.
Thank you, Lou.
I included a list of the, of the codes from every village, Airmont, Wesley Hills, Stony Point. Ramapo, Clarkstown, West Havestra and Spring Valley. So if you open the, your emails, you'll be able to read whatever, every code states. But basically, Wesley Hills and Airmont state it has to be attached in a substantial manner by a wall or roof. And Spring Valley includes attachment by means of a breezeway or roof passageway. But everybody else doesn't define the method of attachment. Okay. Do you have any questions?
Marty, I have to unmute you, I think you're muted.
Okay, I'm unmuted, sorry.
Okay.
You mentioned, excuse me, houses being attached to another house. The only thing I could think of there is, um, in the town of Ramapo, in Muncie. Um, Joanna Lane, right next to the thruway. There's several houses like a high ranch and then there's a house. That integrates itself as the same building. Were you referring to something like that, Mr. Zumo?
Yes, I could, I'm actually looking for the correct, the, the drawings here. Uh, one of the drawings was supplied by Mr. Santano, it was twenty-five Orchard in the town of Ramapo. It's Muncie. It shows a single frame, a single story framed house and a two-story framed house connected by. A proposed addition breezeway. So, but it doesn't show what the breezeway is. It could be a tunnel, it could be a, a room with doors at both ends. It doesn't really say what it is. So, um, you have a copy of this drawing, it was submitted with Mr. Churgan's information.
All right, but you're saying, you know, in Wesley Hills and in the village of Airmont, there is certain definition.
There is, and, and it's, it's a little bit more strict than the rest of them. It specifies the actual method of attachment and the, and the, um. That it has to be a substantial attachment. Which, I mean, if you think of some of the houses we have over by the firehouse, we have several that have a detached garage. With a breezeway between them. The breezeway is about ten feet, but it extends from the roof of the house over the roof of the garage. So the breezeway is actually formed by one continuous roof. Um, that would be an acceptable breezeway, that would make it one structure. Um, this is more like a, a covered walkway or an awning that extends from the house across the driveway to the garage.
So it's quite a stretch of a definition there, uh. In that sense.
It's the stretch of the word breezeway.
Yes.
And there's things you can call a breezeway. I mean, it's a, it's a pretty generic definition, but. It's, it's, uh, this looks more like a, uh, an awning that you see over the entranceway to a restaurant. Where it's four feet wide and ten feet long and it makes a couple turns.
Forty feet. It's forty feet. Not ten feet.
I'm not arguing with you, it's a long breezeway.
Okay.
All right, um, Lou, that, yeah, that's, that's what you have to tell us, thank you. Jason, you wanna add to that or you said it all?
No, no, that's, that's pretty much it unless you have any questions.
Okay. Could there be anything that's been submitted that has to be read into the record?
Um, there was one letter that was received by, uh, the Rockland County Sewer District. That'll read into the record. Just for the record, this, this, when it's a determination or an, an interpretation. Of, uh, building inspector's denial, it does not go out for agency comments. But the sewer district always looks in the newspaper for the public hearing notices, which is why they commented. So I'll just quickly read it from Rockland County Sewer District. Dated August twenty-six, Jeremiah's Carlyle office has received and reviewed plot plan last revised August fourth. Um, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong letter, excuse me. That's eighty-four North Warner. We did not receive one. I'm, I missed, I misspoke. Oh no, we did, hold on. I put the wrong letter in the wrong file. Excuse me, it's dated September seventeenth, uh, for thirty-nine Beston Parkway. Office has received and reviewed information from the Journal News published on September fourteenth. And the legal notices for the above the application of the zoning board of appeals for the public hearing, uh, for this evening. Our comments are as follows. Approval of this application for an appeal on the determination of the building inspector. To plan to build a structure by means of a roof on poles or breezeway connecting the proposed garage and gym. To a one-family residence on a twenty-eight thousand two hundred square foot lot. In the R twenty-five district, does not require the applicant to pay an impact fee. In accordance with the Rockland County Sewer Use Law as last amended in two thousand and ten. However, if the use or the occupancy of the property exceeds one unit. For example, if the gym is rented to the public or within an apartment. A house of worship, a school, a daycare center or a home occupation. The district will require further review and an owner will have to pay an impact fee. Please inform us of any developments on this project. If you have any questions, please contact our office, Joseph Laffriandra, engineer two. That's the only correspondence to read into the record besides Lou's letter that he already read.
Okay, um. Uh, and since this is the determination, do we still need to open this up to the public or?
No, no, there's no public comment on a determination, I confirm that with Dan.
Right, so, um. Oh, Dan muted.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Okay. Go ahead, Dan.
All right.
Yeah, let, let me go beyond that, um. Uh, Suzanne and I reviewed the code. Code of the village of Airmont, not the codes of totally unrelated municipalities. And according to Airmont. With regard to a, uh. Challenge to a building inspector's determination. There is no provision which provides for, um. A public hearing, public comment, et cetera. In essence. Um, what this is, is the building inspector makes a determination. And the applicant is free to challenge that determination. And there is nothing in the code that provides that that be subject to a public hearing. One example that I came up with was, uh, someone calls up the building inspector. Says, or, or writes the building inspector, uh, listen, uh, I'm in an R forty district. I want to, uh, change my single family house into a dentist's office. And, uh, what is your determination? The building inspector would look at the code, they don't have to give their address. It's based on, um. The zoning code. So, uh, building inspector looks at the R forty zoning district. What uses are allowed? Um, and then. Uh, could point out to the, this really, uh, unknown. Inquirer. That, no, in the R forty district, uh, you cannot convert, uh, your, uh, it's not an allowable use. Uh, you cannot convert your house into a dentist's office. You would need to get a, uh, use variance from the zoning board. So. Using that as an example. That person would be entitled to challenge the building inspector's determination. But. It would be irrelevant as to the specific location. What street, uh, it was located on. It would relate to the use not being allowed in the district. So who would you give notice to? And, um. I think the answer would clearly be you couldn't. It's strictly related to the question of whether or not. The use, uh, is allowed in the zoning district. Acquainting that to the application at hand. The issue relates to, uh, a breezeway. Cat, uh, and whether or not, under the Airmont code. A fifty-foot breezeway. Would constitute, uh, not gonna get the exact terminology. But, uh, a secondary, uh. Uh, building. So. Going further, I looked at when a public hearing would be required before the zoning board. And all I could find was if someone was applying for an area variance for a specific house. Or a specific property or a use variance for a specific house or a specific property. What's being challenged here is the building inspector's determination as to the, um. Issue raised by Mr. Churgan through, well, through Ms. Churgan for his client. As to whether or not he is interpreting, and don't forget, the building inspector interprets the code. Whether or not his interpretation of the code. In the view of the zoning board of appeals. Complies, uh, with the zoning code in the village of Airmont. So, um, the opinion. I could have an opinion. A lot of people can have an opinion. But that's not what is an issue here. The issue is, did the building inspector make the proper determination? Based on the zoning code? So. Uh, that. And, uh, I'll even go so far as to say, I'm not going to give my opinion. It's solely the discretion of the members of the zoning board. To determine whether or not, uh, they agree with the building inspector's determination. And, uh. That is why, uh. Everything that's before you, um, is from Lou supporting. Or, uh. At least his opinion as to why he feels that his interpretation was correct. Does that answer the question? Not, not, does everyone agree with me? Does that answer the question?
No public hearing, I think that's what you were saying and all that. Right. Right.
So.
I agree with them.
And, and, and to be clear, we have had a number, not many. But a number of applications throughout the years. Challenging the building inspector's determination. And we have handled it exactly the same. In those instances, as it's being handled tonight.
Okay, so Dan, now we would need some sort of, uh, motion to either support or dispute the building inspector's determination?
Well, at some point. The members may have questions.
Ultimately, that's.
Yes, ultimately, that would be the, uh. Final conclusion.
Okay, do any member of, of the board wish to put any questions to the building inspector?
I don't.
Okay, uh, Mr. Cabell?
Repeat that, I was trying to get unmuted there, so I.
Sorry about that.
No, it's not your fault. I had to send a text, so can you repeat the question, please?
Question is, do you have any questions to put for Mr. Zumo?
No, not at all.
None, okay, I have none either. So, um, it's not a public hearing, so no one else gets to speak. So at this point, um, I, I imagine we need a, uh, motion to either uphold or dispute. The building inspector's determinate, uh, decision, uh, how we interpret the code. Does anyone wanna make?
And in either instance, uh, my recommendation would be. To offer your opinion as to why you support or you disagree.
Okay. Does anyone wanna put, uh, it's only two people here, anyone else wanna put it out, a motion?
All right, Mr. Chairman. Shall I make a motion?
Please make a motion.
All right, uh. I wanna add a word, this backwards or forwards, but I'll, I'll try to make a motion. To, uh, support the building inspector's determination of, uh, the relevant. Relevant building code with respect to the. Definition and description of breezeway as it pertains to. Definition and description of breezeway as it pertains to. You know, an accessory or, you know, freestanding structure. I don't know if I worded that quite correctly, but I think I have.
Do we have a second of that motion?
Second.
Second, okay.
I, I do want to point out that ironically, both Mr. Chergan and. Mr. Zumo went to Blacks Law Dictionary. In support of their arguments. I don't think I've ever seen that before. How should I say this? They cited the same definition.
Nope, we did not.
Well. You both went to Blacks Law Dictionary.
That's true.
Mr. Chairman, do I have a second on my motion? I'm sorry.
Yes.
We do, okay.
So Suzanne, can you pull the roll for a vote?
Okay, for the, um, member Cavell?
Member Cavell supports his motion. Because. I just.
No, hold on. Let's, let's be clear. Let's be clear. Mr. Cavell, no, you don't. You don't support your motion. It sounds like you're supporting the building inspector's determination.
No, 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 no. The motion was to support the buildings and, and building inspector's interpretation of the Armont zoning code. That's, you know, that's the motion. But, but as a member, I'm giving a reason.
Perfect.
I mean, that's what your guidance is. Is that correct, Dan? That, that's what your guidance is?
I, I will go so far as to say is, that is what is required.
Okay, I take that as your guidance because you're informing, informing me of the requirement. My, uh, my reason is simple. It's, it's, I don't believe what's presented by the applicant. As described, breezeway is in any way substantial in nature. Quite simply, I have nothing to add to that. And, you know, that's, that's my opinion and that's my reason for supporting the building inspector's interpretation. It just. Is a bit obvious to me and with respect to, that's how it stands with respect to Armont's zoning code. With respect to accessory or freestanding structures, I don't believe it is substantial at all, so. I vote to.
You don't think what's substantial?
The breezeway as, as, as described that portends to connect the two structures. Making it. Not an accessory structure.
Okay. Who's next, Suzanne?
Okay, member buyer?
Okay, first I'd like to thank Chergan and Salantano on their homework and then looking up the, their determination of a breezeway. Lou, both your first and your last letters there and the information as well. I like to see what's going on outside this of the village, but as far as concerned, this is the village of Armont and that's what we go by. And as of this time, I'm going to support our building inspector's determination. And the definition of the breezeway per Armont zoning codes.
Okay. And Chairman Katz?
I also vote to in favor of supporting determination made by our village inspector. He seems to be, I mean, he is very knowledgeable about the code and how it appears and how it affects things. And. And I would agree also that we have to know what's going on in Armont and that other jurisdictions that may or may not have similar laws as ours. I also would think that this 40, 50 feet breezeway seems to try to be an end around. Some other requirements. And I would support. Our building inspector's determination of what required under the code. Okay.
Okay, so 3-0 in, in support of the building inspector's determination.
Okay, thank you. Is there any way that the applicant and African architect could meet with the building inspector to. Determine what would be substantial in, in his opinion?
Call up the building inspector, make an appointment, see what he tells you.
I. I. I have no objection whatsoever. I think. That. That's completely appropriate.
Oh, good. Okay, thank you.
Nope, we're good. Thank you.
Okay, this case is closed. Anything else on the agenda?
This is all that's on this evening's agenda. I just want to reiterate, we do have agendas, or I should say, applications. For October 14th, which is going to start at 7:30 on Zoom. And we are, we have applications already for November 9th as well.
Okay.
So we definitely have two meetings. Who, who knows what else could come in? The deadline for the November meeting hasn't even passed yet, but the deadline for October has. And we have three applications. One is a continuance and two are, are new.
Would that be the Dunkin' Donuts application?
Yes, it would be. And actually, it's probably better that they did continue from the last meeting because at the last meeting, they wouldn't have even had time to have been heard.
It went long.
Yes, it went long. And that being said, the application that was at the last meeting from the 9th is continued to our November meeting. So we have two large ones on each month. Just wanted to point that out.
Is it realistic to think that we're going to hit two other cases in October? Because if I remember the. One, it was quite large.
It, it is. It's up to you as chairman. If you'd like to be to try to schedule a second meeting in October. I was going to propose that, but that is up to you. If you'd like me to take a poll. After the holidays, I gladly do so and we could try to schedule a second meeting for October. Because if any of those continue, say if we didn't do a second meeting, then it's going to affect the November. We're going to have a domino effect of. Of pushing people over.
Okay, I think that's a good idea. So maybe we should call. The members for a second meeting in October.
Okay, I will do that. I will send out emails.
Okay, so all business having been done and completed tonight.
Yes.
We can adjourn.
I need a motion to adjourn, please.
I'll make such a motion.
Okay.
Second it, it's my job tonight.
All in favor? Good night, everyone. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. What shall I say?
Good night, everyone.